What?
Oh, I'm talking to you.
Oh, I was like, yeah, we're done?
That was the first time.
That's the fastest.
Hey, Johnny, that was the first time we got things for coming in.
How are you?
Good. You better watch your back.
You want to just put the whole board on you?
That's funny, right?
I mean, you think I'm kidding you?
No.
I used to run out of gas quite a bit, dude. I mean, not because I was stupid, but because I didn't have any money.
I had money that time.
Okay, FDIC meeting October 1st, 2012. Board of adjutants called the order at 7:01. Board members present is Freddie Amaro, Freddie Salas, Juan Ortiz, David Stroger, Ronald Duvino, myself, Sarah Mendoza, and Fred Kess.
When you want to announce this picky.
Okay. I had got an email from Ms. Soho. She's gonna have to sit down due to her new job and her business and the timing with her son. It's hard for her to make meetings, so she was send a letter of resignation today. And I forward that to you. I emailed it to you.
Yes, I got it.
Okay. Okay. Let's go ahead and start with CNA fiscal year 2013 budget as part of the budget discussion evaluation. The executive director will be in closed session. This, according to the government code of Texas, section 551.074, personal matters. Any other tape, it will be in open session.
Okay, what I want to do is go ahead and go over the budget.
You don't make a motion to go to executive session?
Later. Okay, I'm sorry, can you say something?
No, 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 I looked like I was gonna say something.
Yes, sir, I anticipated. And I think everybody except Mr. Amaro, we're here the last time. So what I'll do is I'll just go through the, what I gave you here. And then I mailed you, Freddie, you should have gotten it, last year's budget.
Yes, sure.
As a comparison, but, but you know, this is what we're proving as fiscal year.
Can I have another one of those?
Yes.
Okay.
You should have one there, yeah.
You have an extra one there? Follow? Thank you.
And... So I'm just gonna go ahead and go through this, and then if y'all have questions along the way, please stop me and then I can explain. There are a couple of changes that I made from the last one. First, I want to go through our balances in the bank. And our balance in checking is $8,775.56. Our money market account, $639,864.78. Our CD is $56,776.43. Our total in the bank as of the end of September, $705,416.77. And that's cash in the bank available to us. We also received the sales tax for September 2012, and that's $50,597.78. Total cash in the bank as of the end of the fiscal year 2012, $756,145.55. That's what we have available to us right now. Any questions on that?
On the $50,597, was that, did that meet the projection?
It was, it was about 15% higher than what we anticipated.
So it was even higher?
It was even higher, yes, sir.
Good.
And I think what, what we've been seeing in the last five, six months, the sales tax receipts, not only us here in Floresville, but throughout Texas, and not just where we have Eagle Ford Hill, but Texas as a whole has been doing real well. People are feeling comfortable, they got work, they're spending their money, which, you know, if you have steady employment, it's gonna, it's gonna mean that. Projected income for fiscal year 2013, the beer warehouse, and normally this stays pretty steady. $7,500. Interest is very low right now. We anticipate about $550 that we gain in interest. The senior loan payment, that's...
What is that, that interest coming from?
The money market account, basically, and the CD. But it's so low right now, it's, I mean, you can't even see it.
No, I understand.
But I have to account for it.
Sure.
The senior apartment loan payment, and that's the repayment to us. It'll be for the year, $12,715. Projected sale of land at $450,000. On that one, we still have 88 acres at the, at the business park that are under contract right now. We're, we're, we got three companies that are interested. We're renegotiating contracts, and then as soon as I get something done, I'll come back to the board and show you what we have. The projected sales tax revenue for next year, and basically what I've done is a 12% increase from this year. So I'm estimating for next year, $667,000 for the whole year. And this year, the total, and I don't have, you know, the, the sales tax receipt form with me, but last year, you know, we, we collected $593,000, just shy of $600,000, which was about $40,000 more than what I had anticipated last year at the same time. But...
So you, you base that, that 12% growth at the $667,000, even though you had a 15% over?
For, for one month.
Right.
For one month, see, but if you take it over the whole year, you know, the, the increase was maybe 12, 11 to 12% overall. But, and this is just me, but I always underestimate a little bit. Because I think it's better if we don't go too high, because then we all may think we're gonna get X amount of dollars, and we spend that, and it doesn't happen, you know? So I think it's better, gives us a bit of a cushion. But that's, if you look at that amount, a few years back, in the old year, we were making $200,000 a year.
All right.
And this is, you know, $667,000. So with, with all the new stores coming in, the Walmart is really picking up, the HEB hasn't skipped a beat. Look around all the restaurants, and I'm sure like in your own businesses, you know, you can see the change before, you know, they're spending money, and that's good for us. But also, we got a lot more people coming into town on a regular basis, you know, from the old companies, and just people that are coming to visit and spend money here in Los, so that's all. But the total projected income for next year, fiscal year 2013, is $1,137,765. Total funds available for next year, including with what we have in the bank, is $1,893,779.55. And I can guarantee y'all, whether we had $300,000 in the bank, or if I anticipate to have 1.8 million, 1.9 million, we're not broke. And I heard some people say the other day that, you know, we're in the red, we're almost having to sell brisket plates or something to make up our payments. That's not the case. These are good, solid numbers. And, you know, I try to give you the best analysis that I can, so that all of you feel comfortable that what we have is good, and it'll be good for the rest of the year. Now, on the expenditures for next year, the beer warehouse, I always put in a little money, because it is an old building, and sometimes we have to do some work on it. The rains on Friday exposed the leak in one other corner, so we're gonna have to go in and spend a little, maybe $200, $300 to repair a leak. But for the whole year, estimate about $3,500. Downtown renovation, we still have some issues with water running down the road and creating problems for people to get from their car into the buildings. And there are some issues with some of the onins that are leaking again, so we have to check that out. But I'm estimating there, and this may be a little bit of an overestimation, but I'd rather in this case, have a little extra if we have to spend to repair the, the onins. And also, I don't know yet how much it would cost to fix the drainage problem on the water. It's primarily coming from A Street towards, B Street coming towards C Street, you know, where the cottages are. And right at the point, A Street, no, B, B Street to C.
Right there in front of Jalisco, sir?
Yeah, right in front, when, when the water turns right there in front of Jalisco, it really gets, the water gets as deep, you know, when it rains. And, and it's all because, it all, it's coming from where the cottages are, and it's also coming down the street. It really gathers at that area, and it just makes a turn, and it just runs real deep down the C Street. The plan is to, and I've talked to the engineers, and also talked to the city road crews, we would have to put a, a water drainage across, across the street on Third Street from where the old bank is, you know, before you hit C Street, it's cut a drainage there, and so allow the water to go in there. And on this side, there's a culprit, so that would collect all the water and then take it off, and it wouldn't run around towards Jalisco. That will solve a lot of problems there. We also have some sidewalks that are deteriorating pretty bad. If you walk on them, you can see where they're all breaking up. So we'll start, start taking a look at that and see how best to repair them. We don't have the resources to take out all the sidewalks and build new ones, you know? But we do have, I think, resources to fix the sidewalks that need to be fixed.
Is there a bid process?
I'm sorry?
A bid process, will that take place?
Bidging?
A bidding.
Well, it depends on, on the amount of money that, that we have for the, for the sidewalks.
Well, it's, it's more than $10,000 then?
Twenty-five thousand.
And this $50,000?
Magic, right?
Yes.
And this $50,000 that you have, is that was just something that was allocated years ago, months ago?
In general, we've allocated it for some time, but we've not completely used all the funds for it. There's a lot of things we could do downtown, but, but to answer David's question, you know, to get the best deal, you know, and, and we've done that before on the downtown area with, with sidewalks. And I think the, at the last time we did any work, Mr., I think it's Mr. Serna from Pope? I'm mistaken.
Ruppers.
Huh?
Serna is a rooper.
Okay.
Guy's, it wasn't Guy's?
Yeah, Guy's, I mean, he did the sidewalks in front of the Arcaneum, and in front of, just in front of the courthouse. On Lone Oak Business Park, I've allocated $10,000. We've just about completed all the work there. And that's, that $10,000 will probably go into extending the sewer line to the, that new building, the Texas, the Texas Health and Human Services office. And we gotta extend the line about 60 feet to get to building site. They're already in the process that they've submitted all their permits, and hopefully they'll start construction pretty soon. They're waiting for one last check from the, the city engineers and their inspectors to get started.
What item are you talking about here?
The Lone Oak, oh, I'm sorry, Lone Oak Business Park, that's the one over there, the hot on, by Angelicus.
And that, that $10,000 is to extend the sewer line which direction?
No, let me, let me backtrack on that one. On the Lone Oak Business Park, I think we've pretty much completed everything, and I said the last time, maybe the installation of a sign there on the, on the front of, as you come in off of 181. There's still a little work we have to do on the retention pond, such as it is across from where Angelicus is. We had to build a small retention pond there at the request of the state. But for all intents and purposes, most of the work has already been completed there. So this is just gonna be, if we go into a sign and, and, you know, talk with the owners that are out there and see if they want to cooperate with us.
So that $10,000 is for a retention pond and a sign?
A retention pond work and a possible sign out there.
And where, where was the extension of the sewer for the Health and Human Services?
Okay. Yeah, I don't have it in there. And that, that's on the, on the Veterans Park, Business Park. But again, that is only like 60 feet that we have to go. So I have to, you know, we have to put it in there. After Lone Oak, on Veterans Park, and I think that's only gonna be about $6,000.
Six?
$6,000. Okay, I'll make that change. Then at the Rancho Grande Business Park, basically we have to finish out the road, and which includes the entry point going into the park. We've, we've done it with base material. We need to, at the entry into the business park, we're probably gonna have to go with concrete to save the wear and tear on the road with all the truck traffic we're gonna have out there. And also, we have to build a retention pond out there. We don't know the exact cost of that, nor the exact cost on, on the entryway. And our engineers relook at all those requirements, and once he gives us a plan, then we, we have to, you know, start going out for bids and trying to see that we can get that work done out there. What I've asked Mr. Gregor to do is give me a rough estimate as to how much he thinks it would cost to, to do those things, and he's given me a number of about 350. That's an estimate? I don't know exactly what it's gonna cost us, but we think we can do it for less than that.
And this at the Rancho Grande?
Mm-hmm.
And this is for the retention pond and?
The retention pond out there?
And then the road?
The road, the entry point and to finish the road.
Finish the road, that's with, with pavement, with that fault, or?
Eventually we want to do that, yes. But for right now, I'm concentrating on building the entry point, harden it, and then do the things that Tech Stop wants us to do out there in order to provide for the safety of the vehicles coming in and out. And then later on, we have to consider, okay, you know, Mr. Gregor thinks that, you know, this would include the pavement of the road as well, but I'm not so sure right now if that would be enough money to cover the pavement of the road, and also finishing the entry point, and the, the things that we have to do in front of the, of the entry point to satisfy Tech Stop requirements. But for right now, that estimate, I think, is, is good to start the year with, and if we have to adjust it, I come back to the board and, you know, give you the reports.
Well, we're gonna need an engineer study?
We have already done an engineer study on the retention pond. We have an engineer study done on the roads, and we just want to make sure that with all the changes that we've done out there, and what Tech Stop is asking us to do, then the engineer report that we have covers all of that. So I've got all that already. The engineer study on the retention pond is, is preliminary, so I, we have to make sure that, that what, what they've given us there is something that, you know, we can do, and it'll meet the demand or the need out there.
And that, the cost on that study, is it in the 350?
Yes, no, the study, like I said, has already been done, but we have to spend a little bit more.
So have, have we met the county's expectations, what they wanted?
Not quite yet, because we haven't turned in the, the engineer report on the retention pond. But I've given them the reports on the road, and we gave them a preliminary report on the top of, you know, topographic survey out there that shows how the water drains and where it drains to. Mr. Hymer is working to give us, you know, the complete study on that, and, and once you do the drainage report, then you have to figure out, okay, where are the retention ponds needed to ensure that the water flows through the property, as it always has flowed through? And also, what impact does it have on the companies that are gonna be out there? But preliminarily, what they're telling us is that the impact on the companies is gonna be minimal, and it's basically ensuring that the water flows through the middle of the property, the creek that's out there, which is the conservation area that we've got 23 acres that we've dedicated in the middle of the property. They're not, we're not gonna sell, and that serves as a, as a drainage way for, for the entire property. The way the roads are being designed, the water will flow from the south to the middle of the property, from the backside, and from the north to the south in the middle as well. So the land is like this. So from 537, the water drains to the south, and from the back end of the property, the water drains from the south to the north, and it all meets at the center part. If we design the roads correctly, then the bar ditches that we build will help channel the water back into the creek, you know? And then where that doesn't happen, that's where the need for retention ponds would be, to slow down the water and help keep it from, you know, having an adverse effect on all our, our companies out there. And also to ensure that it doesn't create a problem for any of the neighbors that are adjacent to us where the water flows out.
This impact on the businesses, any of this 88 acres, is any of that flood or that water way, is it impacting any of that 88 acres?
No. Also, this, this property out there, none of it is in a flood zone. And the entire 305 acres out there, it's outside the flood zone. But the concern is with, with all these companies building their buildings and putting in their truck yards, that what will it do to the water flowing through there now? Okay, but if you consider if, if a company buys 20 acres, and they're only gonna build on two or three acres, or four acres, shall we say, their truck yard maybe takes another acre or two, they're not paving, and they're not putting concrete down. You know, they're using base material for the road, for their padsides around the, the building. And there's still at least maybe six to 10 acres buffer between them and the 23-acre conservation area that we have. You know, so it's not like you're building a hard surface like this, and it's just, you know, going right through. And I welcome, you know, come out, give me a, give me a call when you have time, and I'll take you out there, and we can see exactly what I'm talking about. When they do these drainage studies also, they use a certain standards that they have for business parks or built-up areas, but a lot of these numbers are hypothetical numbers, and they're basing on, you know, let's say, if you use the San Antonio data, it's if you're gonna build an industrial park in an urbanized area like San Antonio. That's not the case here. And most of these companies, as I've said, I've not heard of a single one that's gonna pave over their truck pads or build, you know, 20 acres of concrete, and then they build a company on top of that. And it's not like what you picture with the Walmart or the HEB, you know? When they came in and built, talk about a 20, 30-acre track, they paved it completely. So you have 20 acres of impervious material, the water has nowhere to go but to run off, and it's designed that way. But in this case, that's not necessarily the situation that we have out there.
I was just wondering, how many properties potentially could that water runoff impact?
Property from where?
In the business park?
None.
The only thing that would maybe impact on any of that would be the county that wants to put the deceleration lane right in the front part, that would be it?
The, the state, the state wants that, yeah. And it's going into the entryway, coming in from 181. But because of the, the road itself and the easement that the road has, it's not very wide. There's not too much more you can do to that road up there at 537, because you don't have a wide, a wide easement, and the footprint of the road is not, you know, was not designed, I guess, for a four-lane road or anything like that. There is some space to build it, even if you could build it. So basically, the best we can do then is build a deceleration lane, and, you know, all the traffic coming into the park, it enters into that space and it frees up the road, you know, so normal traffic doesn't get impacted with that. On a turning lane coming from the east, and east to west, and if you turn into the business park, the Tech Stop is asking us to build an apron on, on the, on the north side of 537, a three-to-five-foot apron that kind of widens the road somewhat. It's the best option we have right now, given the fact there is not enough space to do everything that needs to be done. So I think that'll provide a safety, you know, be some aspects of safety out there. And it's the best situation that we can get, given the terrain that's out there.
But I would think those, even if we get to that point and build those, they would have no impact on the flow of water.
Oh, no, 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 they have no impact on the flow of water, no.
They have their own commissaries, they won't probably let them.
Yeah, though the, all the impact on the water is, as I said, the water from the south to the north flows into the creek, or the drainage area that we have, and from the north to the south, same thing.
That, that creek or the drainage is in the middle of the property?
I'm sorry?
Is it in the middle of the property?
Yeah, yes, it is.
And it's one that has been there forever?
Yeah, we created it.
And it's in water from the other side, from the, all the fields around there that irrigate? That water has been going through there?
Is that part of the 23 acres that?
Yes. And that's why we, we've always maintained that, that area. And the intent is to keep that, not sell that. In the future, you know, once we know the impact of the, the complete drainage study, you look at it, there are some spots that are on the high ground, maybe five to eight acres out of that 23, we possibly could sell and have no impact on the water whatsoever. But before I even entertain that, I want to make sure, you know, that I don't offer a piece of land to somebody that, you know, three or four months from now, we get a four or five-inch rain and they get washed out.
We don't need to, right?
So, so that, that's what we're looking at, right?
And I don't know if I'm using the right terminology, but these buffer areas that you're talking about serve as natural green areas, right?
Oh, yeah. And, and if you look at those 23 acres out there, you know, because of the way that they run, there really isn't much you can do but to maintain it as a conservation area. So I think it's good for us, it's good for our neighbors out there, for all the companies that we're gonna have out there. So I don't see that as a, as a real problem.
That property kind of runs east-west?
The, the conservation property, yes. East-west, and it's right in the middle of it.
I don't know, it starts in the middle and goes to the west fence line.
It goes from the east fence line all the way across there. And in fact, if you follow it, it'll do Jerome Fleer's property on the east side, same thing.
And if anything, we've improved the flow tremendously, though, which?
Yeah, exactly.
And that, that was all, it's all, it's trees and?
It's got trees, mainly a lot of trees and shrub.
Christine?
Yeah. All we do is clear along the creek line to help the water.
And a lot of excavating in there, too, do you?
Yeah, and we have to do that for the culverts that we build.
But I mean, that increases or enhances the flow of water?
Yes, and, and it, it keeps the water inside the creek, you know, the water that's in there. But the bulk of the water is not coming from our property.
Yeah, that's weird.
It's flowing in from the south, and it's flowing in from the east. If you go out there and stand there while it's raining, you can see where the water's coming from, but it's not from our property.
And sometimes they're even raining, but when they're...
Yeah, I wonder if it's raining that there.
Back across the highway on Fleer's.
Yeah, on the other side of the Fleer's. Okay, on the other one, the US-181 infrastructure, we talked about it the last time, and that's in agreement with McCoy, we've agreed to bring the sewer line across the highway, across 181 underneath US-181 from where the Walmart side is, where the lift station is, and then bore under US-181, and extend the lines to the other side. Initial estimates that I received on that, anywhere from 75,000 to 85,000 to do that work, we possibly could do it for a little bit less, but again, it's better not to cut ourselves too short. Now also, at, at that stage, you know, and bringing the lines across, then we may have to do some, some work on the sewer lines across there, build some more manhole covers to take in any future growth from that property on the, across the highway. And then also, the city is committed to, to work with McCoy's to build a road from 181 to the backside, and I think that's County Road 301 or something. It's a small lane in the back, but it goes all the way, comes out at the stoplight where where Walmart is, goes, wraps around all the property, comes out behind the old Walmart. Not a very wide road, but what McCoy wants to do, then is cut a road from US-181, goes through their property and connects to that back road. Now, we're gonna talk with the county and see if there's any way that they cooperate with us when we did County Road 130. with us when we did County Road one thirty. Commissioner Gomis working with us in the city to build that road, or actually to pave the road on County Road one thirty. So we're gonna talk with the county and see if there's any way that they could participate with us on that back road, three oh one, that's, it's in the county, it's outside the city limits. See if there's any way, find a way to cooperate and improve that road in the back. But I've allocated enough resources there, again, these are estimates, we may not get to that limit, but I think it's better to have the funds allocated in case we need them. But I'll come back to the board as we go along and we move on this. I don't know when that's gonna be done, I don't know exactly at what stage the McCoy deal is right now. But we're moving pretty quick on it, two weeks.
That sewer expansion, is, is there currently, do we have city water on that side of the road?
Yeah, the water's coming from Oak Hills.
That would be Oak Hills, okay.
And Oak Hills and McCoy are working a deal to extend the lines out. I think Oak Hills is trying to bring an eight inch line all the way down from their side to the, where the McCoy building's gonna be. And I think Oak Hill provides water all the way up to where Randolph Brooks is, and I think those are all their water lines to that point. So that's, they've come down pretty far. And I know that from that new water tower that they built across the road from Maverick, they've really improved their water lines up and down US one eighty-one. So they're being aggressive about providing support to all the areas. They have a lot of growth out that way too. On the other items, personnel, there is no change, that includes, I gave you all that breakdown the, the last time. And the, and the thing on here, you know, it's got the personnel, my salary, and then I've allocated some funds for the work that Mr. Greg was doing. And what, what he's doing for me is things I don't have to pay an engineer to do, he's estimating all the projects, the cost of material, how much it'll cost in terms of labor, and he does all the coordination with engineers and with the city crews to ensure that we do the infrastructure correctly. So total personnel includes the payroll taxes, eighty-seven thousand fifty dollars. The next line, and this is basically what it takes to operate the office, advertisement and other, a thousand one hundred, and that's basically, we have to pay for advertisements in the paper announcing things that we're doing, you know, that we're doing admin, like bids, you know, those kind of things. Automobile, cost to operate the car, two thousand dollars, telephone, two thousand five hundred, supplies for the office, a thousand five hundred, travel and training, a thousand one hundred, accounting, three thousand, legal, I'm estimating ten thousand, that could be a little bit more expensive, but we're hoping that it doesn't get to be much higher than that. And the lease for the office, we lease our office space from the city, seven thousand two hundred. Total admin, twenty-eight thousand four hundred. Marketing and promotion, website update, two thousand five hundred. We also have the shopping floors hill website that also needs to be updated and revised somewhat, two thousand five hundred. Promotional materials, signs, brochures, whatever we make to promote the FDC and all our projects, ten thousand dollars, total marketing and promotion, fifteen thousand.
Who's the lighting of the town?
Uh, it isn't on there nor are the fireworks. About two years ago, you know, that came up in a board discussion, the board decided not, not to continue funding the lighting nor the fireworks. So last year was the last year that we did it.
But that was the old board.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, but it was a resolution.
No, I, I, I'm just telling you, I would get to be that it's not on there.
I understand. I, I just wondered, the, the new board members, if y'all wanted to change that, we can change that and, and revisit that issue, not pertaining to the lighting of the town or the fireworks, that's, that's a lot too long. If not, we'll give it answers.
Okay, and then, and then, you know, again, this is for discussion, so I'm presenting you my recommendations and then y'all make the changes as y'all see fit. On the debt service, the Wells Fargo loan, fifty-eight thousand dollars, interlocal agreement, which is monies we borrowed with the city back, I guess in two thousand and eight, is one hundred and fourteen thousand nineteen dollars. The total debt service right now is a hundred and seventy-two thousand nineteen dollars. And then this total admin and, you know, debt service promotion comes out to three hundred and two thousand four hundred sixty-nine. The total expenditures that I have estimated for next year is one million one hundred thirteen nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Subtract that from the total funds available and projected at the end of next year, I expect to have seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and fifty-five cents, which goes into our cash reserves and then we can carry it over into the following years. So if everything holds true in the projections that we've made and, you know, not, there's no calamity in the country or anything like that, given recessions and depressions et cetera, then we're in a pretty good position at the end of next year. And that's basically taking care of some pretty major projects and some pretty major expenditures to complete all the work that we've started. And a lot, some of these things we've been working on for about ten years, but we spend a little bit of time in moving forward. One other thing I forgot to point out, the civic center, we do the city from fiscal year eleven, a hundred and twenty-three thousand. And that's a pri, a commitment that the FDC made back in FY eleven, but through the last year and a half or so, when coordinating with the city manager, I requested not to have to pay that because I didn't know some of the expenditures we were making and what impact it was gonna have. So I wanted to make sure we had enough money in reserve to be able to cover all the expenditures for the projects that we're working on. But I think this year, we'll, we'll be in a position to pay that off to the city. I put the sports facility enhancement expansion, the FDC board last year at this time committed a hundred and twenty-five thousand per year, for twenty years, to cover the cost of expanding the facilities for the benefit of the children of the city of Floresville for sports, all the different sports facilities that we have. In that includes, in, in the expansion and the enhancement of the park, and I briefed that the last time, is we do have some issues with water at the river park, of course, with destabilization of the bank behind where the softball, the baseball fields are. And there also is an issue with water going under the fields and creating sinkholes. We have a plan, it was done for us by San Antonio River Authority at no expense to us, they did an extensive engineer study and they've gone back this summer, and they're still re-revising the study and I've not yet received the final from them. What I asked them was, is there a way that we could do this in a more economical way where we don't have to spend too large amount of money to fix the river, the river bank stabilizing, and to fix the problem with, with the sinkholes under the ball fields. And then also, as all of you know, the facilities out there where the ball fields currently, the living fields are, are in deplorable condition, you know, the bathrooms need to be fixed, the concession stand is pretty outdated, the, the facilities as a whole, really we need to take, take them down and build them up again. And then once the stabilization problem on the river is done and once you fix the drainage problem, then we need to see how to improve the fields that are currently there, bring them up to speed. And then, we're currently working on, we've been working on Cantorana Park for some years now. The park is basically cleared now and, you know, with a little bit more expenditure, we can complete the baseball field that we're building there, basically a softball field. We got some free equipment from the schools, some playground equipment, needs to be refurbished, we could put that out at, at Cantorana Park and also take some out to the different park areas that we have to enhance playground equipment throughout the area. And then, if y'all recall, I briefed that Mr. McKenzie had given us twelve acres of land there at North Crest, you know, just south of North Crest, and we've got twelve acres of land there that, we've done most of the clearing of the land, cleared out the brush, we leveled the fields where you could put some fields, and that would be an excellent site for some soccer fields. We're dedicated to soccer, they're off the highway, there's enough room, we could build some parking lots there. And it would enhance the playing capability for soccer, every part of the little, maybe even include some fields where the Wildcats, the football team, and then the soccer at all levels, to include some practice fields for the high school teams if they can't play on their fields because of UIL regulation after a certain time of the year. So those are, those are things that could be incorporated in, into this. As you know, right now, because of the lawsuit that the county has filed against us, we can't move forward right now on borrowing money for a sports facility, sports complex or whatever. What I've explained to you is what things that the board committed to and some of the justification that the board gave in allocating a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But, you know, that's what we have right now, so I present it to the board, you know, for your consideration and discussion.
I have a question, you, you were talking about expanding the Cantorana Park and other soccer fields.
North Crest Park.
And where would all those funds come from, the seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand?
We could take them from that, that hundred and twenty-five thousand that we have, keep in mind, we've not borrowed any money yet.
Okay, so?
So, so continue with the allocation of those funds and continue spending that money on the fields and the parks that we now have.
So those are your?
It's my recommendation, it's my view, I present it to you, you guys are the decision makers.
No, no, I, I just...
And, and, no, no, but that's correct, and I, I give you, I give you something to think about.
We do need, certainly, some sports facilities, timely, pardon?
The need is very obvious, I don't, but it takes any kind of a real brain to figure out that there is a real problem out there, safety related.
I agree with you a hundred percent on that.
And, and the timing, you know, we're a little late in doing it.
Yeah, but that was just questioning, where would those funds come from?
Well, for right now, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you can't do it all at once, and so you would start, develop a good, sound plan and an action plan, if you will, and how we're gonna spend money to that. Now, depending again on the outcome of, of the lawsuit and where we stand with that, and of course, it could change everything, and the board has to reconsider, how do we move forward on that? You know, borrowing the money.
Right now, this one twenty-five is actually set aside for the river park.
The, the hundred and twenty-five thousand is set aside based on last year's board decision to set aside enough funds to assist, you know, with sports facility enhancement of the parks. Then that has gone through some changes to where, you know...
So it's included, it's gone through changes and included Cantorana?
Yes, from my standpoint, what I'm giving y'all, yes.
Now, we're looking at this very comprehensively, both parks and, and sports facilities are concerned and what the kids need. Now, twenty-one, twenty-five a year could, could go one of, two ways, it could actually, we could continue to get a low and haul at one time, so we can start out and do it as quickly as possible, or we can do it, pay as you go.
Incrementally.
And, and the bottom line is, I think, and this is me just saying that, but I think there's a resolution that passed it already, is that we need to do something. You know, I mean, anybody can disagree with the need. I think the politics back and forth here have more to do with personalities, and it has to do with whether there's a need or not, or whether we're for or against the kids. For the kids...
I don't think this is about kids here, but I know there's a need for the erosion down there.
Well, yeah, but it ties into having sports facilities, you know, otherwise we don't even look at it.
Well, I mean, from what I looked at, it's, if you don't take care of that erosion problem right now, it's, it's gonna completely cut through and we're gonna have bigger problems in the future, so.
But what's there right now is, in essence, you know, park facilities.
What I saw there and what Mr. Perez has presented from San Antonio River Authority's engineer, is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure, which a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that, that type of project needs to be done, it's gonna have to be done, you can't do those type of projects in stages.
Oh, no, no, I understand that.
But I'm just saying that, 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 that project needs to be done first.
Well, and again, I'm, I'm speaking, but I'm listening up here and kind of getting a consensus of, of people that have been here for, for a long period of time, is that, that we would do this and, and, you know, as far as a plan, which we have, people say you don't have a plan to do. We would do it based on, on safety related issues first, which the drainage problem would be, the top, in my opinion, and then the, the concession stand, the, the bathrooms, and then look at the fields existing now. And then to the extent we can, you know, because I think it's, it's, it's a good thing to do, to have some, maybe at some point in time, if at all possible, some tournament quality fields, because our kids are good enough to go beyond the regular season, we should be able promptly to host tournaments. Not to make money, but just to accommodate our needs to provide healthy recreational opportunities for our kids. Now, whether, like you say, and I, and I agree with that, I don't think we can do the, the first part of it incrementally.
That absolutely, yeah.
That, that has, that requires some money upfront. Now, the, the, and again, I'm going on beyond what, what you're, you were talking about, but I think it's important. You know, this lawsuit is, is holding us back from going the way that the board voted back in August, only because we decided to wait and see. But it does not in any way influence on our decision at some point to do what we need to do. You know, that only means we can't go based on, on, if the, the, the meaning was illegal, we don't think it is, but if it was, then all we have to do is repost and make it right to cover, because it was based on, on their allegation insufficiency of, of information to the public. We don't think it was insufficient, but nevertheless. My point is, it's only stopping using or going to get the loan if in fact there was something wrong with that meeting, it doesn't change our commitment to want to do this. That has, that lawsuit has nothing to do with that.
But it is preventing us to go ahead and fix that erosion that's needed. A lot of people are just thinking about the sport complex as the word that was said, but that's a, that's a real need that's needed by the river.
It's a misnomer, somebody stuck that in there and it created a problem that is totally unnecessary and it's getting the wrong people or, or organizations.
It would be nice if they would look and see that, the study that was given there and see how much erosion is, is happening out there.
Even, even some of the people that are saying, you know, hold back or whatever have indicated.
They've seen it, right? And they've seen pictures.
And that's something that was gonna be fixed with this year.
Yes.
But this Saturday, where some of the people that have been saying, you know, stop and do it, are saying you can fly a B-58 or whatever, you know, to some of the host, exaggeration, obviously. And what the people that know, you know, the people that have been involved in the, in the, in the activities over there, managers, parents, you know, the neighbors, league directors, they bring pictures, they have, and they show, you know, it's, it's, it's something. Mr. Garcia, Diana's husband, who's a former coach, one Saturday morning over here told the mayor, you know, you need to condemn those fields, well, we don't wanna do that at what point? I mean, to start anew is a lot more expensive.
You know, the, the first time they did a display on the slideshow with Sherry Pollack did it, it looked like Fenway Park, someone asked one of the engineers... it looked like Fenway Park and someone asked one of the engineers, well, what would that park, what she's showing us cost? And he, well, you know, started laughing, well, that, that's a twelve, fifteen million dollar project. So that got everything out of line right there, so it was misrepresented. Another thing is-
It was misinterpreted because-
It was misinterpreted, but you, you know, that, that started everything right there.
Yes, and I agree with you, I agree with you, that was the wrong thing to do. And then you might recall later in the meeting where we had the, the financial people talk to us where they were making an assessment, how much, how much could we afford based on what we make, so to speak, the city? They came down to two point five million, that was a real figure, not the-
But, you know, you get this back to this erosion problem. If that, if that was presented all in one, one package,
God, yes, I see.
nothing, it would already passed, it would already pass.
It was presented, David, they, they'd asked me that question. The city council asked me that question and we said, when the, when the company came in, came in and asked, said, Bill, we're gonna borrow this two point one million. And they asked me a question, the FEDC was gonna have control of the money, oversee the project. The first thing that we had, that I said was, first thing we are going to do is fix the river. The problem with the river, that's the priority.
Was that study or?
Oh, yeah, the study has, we've had the study since two thousand and ten, I think.
Yeah, we asked Sherri to come in and-
And that was gonna be one of the biggest, was to fix, the top priority was to fix the river. We had, we've had meetings with the people that were going to build the, to fix the parks. They have engineers and they have people that could do that type of project and that was gonna be also included. But it just got, no one heard, nobody wanted to hear that. Everybody thinks this is huge sports complex facility, it is not.
Brand new.
It is going to, I keep saying it over and over and over and no one listens, no one wants to hear it. They wanna believe these false accusations that we're gonna build this sports facility, sports complex. No, it was just to fix the fields, fix what we have already.